The United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call order roll call started on my right.
Counselperson Brent Fire.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Olgin.
Approval of tonight's agenda. Anything staff, we're gonna put this West Development, is that on there?
It's on there, I need to approve.
A second.
Got a motion in a second to approve, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, that carries, approval of council meeting minutes of the regular meeting of August 12th, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion, the questions on it? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries, financing budget accounts payable with the additional listing on there. Have any questions, direct them to Finance Director Carla.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the finance accounts payable, we have a second.
Second.
Do we have any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries, motions in general business, and the first item under motions in general business tonight. Get this thing working again.
You get it?
Yeah, I got it. Public hearing, Ware removal of hazardous trees. At the July 14th meeting, council directed attorney left to start the process of removing the trees from the Ware property as per our hazardous tree ordinance 2019-2. Ware has received the attached letters from left notifying that the trees needed to be removed and that a public hearing will be held on August 25th, which Ware would be given the opportunity to be heard and to present evidence on the matter. Mayor King will now close the regular meeting, that's me, I'm gonna close the regular meeting, we're gonna open the public hearing. Any written or calls or anything, Joe?
No.
Anyone wanna speak on Mr. Ware's behalf? I would ask you go to the podium please and speak from there.
Thank you, my name's Lena Novatny, I'm Mr. Ware's attorney, unfortunately couldn't be here personally, so he asked me to come on his behalf. I do understand that the process here with Mr. Ware's trees, I think has actually been ongoing longer than the history that was just alluded to. Unfortunately, my involvement is, I guess, a little late, but I wanna express Mr. Ware's concerns to the council as well as my own. I've personally been out on Mr. Ware's property and seen the trees that, I believe there are three trees currently marked with an X, which are the trees subject to, I guess, this consideration. I'm not sure if there's been discussions between Mr. Ware and any of the city officials. There is one tree that there's been partial removal or some trimming and maintenance, I'm not sure if that's anything that anyone at the city is aware of, but the, a professional tree removal forester was hired to come out and trim this one tree in the front yard. There's one in front, two in back. And at this time, it's Mr. Ware's belief, and I would tend to agree, essentially, any part of that tree that is in any way headed towards the neighbor, I think was the main, is the main part of the ordinance here, if this tree had a likelihood of falling and causing damage to a neighbor's property, people or property, as it stays, has essentially been removed. So we would ask that consideration be given to that, in that fact that, basically, that danger has been removed and then it would no longer follow, fall under the definition of a public hazard. The other two trees, I'm not sure, I know it's not part of the process, I don't think there's any requirement in your ordinances that requires anyone from this council to go out and visually see any trees that you are considering ordering abated or removed that probably should be part of the ordinance, trees that have been part of the community for 50, 80, 100 years, the question or the determination of whether or not they should be cut down or removed is not one that should be taken lightly. In this case, I struggle a little bit with the ordinance, just states that a tree creating a public hazard will be declared a public nuisance. Fairly broad there, I can't tell from the current ordinance what exactly it takes to be, to become that, that classification. In the, in the current assessments, what I believe, I believe everybody has the assessment sheet that went out, or have seen the assessments from the arborist, at least what I can glean from it was a little difficult for me to decipher, there, there essentially was four trees that we were talking about, but three, I think, are up for consideration for being determined as hazardous, which I'm not sure why that is, one tree was considered to be dead, and the definition, that one, that one I understand, that in the ordinance, it says a standing dead tree will be declared as a public nuisance, but that one wasn't one of the ones to be declared removed. Two of the trees, there's a map in the, in the tree assessment form that shows two of these trees essentially are, they're almost side by side, they're on a property line, right, that's expected, I believe that's probably where this ordinance came from, was there was perhaps some disagreements within adjoining landowners on how to handle trees on a property line, that's many times where these ordinances come from. These two trees are very close to the property line on the map, Mr. Ware's property, I think, has been surveyed a couple of times, so the property lines are fairly definite there. And upon inspection, those two trees, they do lean towards the neighbors to a certain degree. If you were able or willing to go out and take your own assessment, I'm not sure where the arborist found that, at least for sure, one of those trees, if it fell, it doesn't even look like it's possible that it would touch the neighbor's house. There maybe is a little, you know, like a tool shed, like a six by six tool shed, perhaps, that's in the backyard, but that tree, I believe it stands about eight or eight tall, there's a couple of dead branches on it, the trunk is approximately two and a half feet in diameter, there doesn't appear to be any splintering, breaking, cracking, leaning. In this case, what it seems that the assessor looked at, at least in my opinion, is, in most days, he said there's EAB infestation, I believe that means emerald ashbore, is what I believe it means, but what's, what's not in these assessments is to what degree any testing went into determining how infested a tree may be, or what signs he is, what he's seeing to determine that. There are treatments available, readily available, for trees until they get to a certain degree of infestation. These trees are simply applied on the ground or on a tree approximately every four years, and therefore we can save a tree, instead of having to cut, cut these trees down. What I can't tell from the assessments is to what degree these trees are infested, unfortunately. And that, and that's part of the struggle, I know from Mr. Ware, is looking at the information in here and the classification in your ordinance, to what degree do we need, or where, how far should a tree be before we're determining it to be hazardous and just cutting this down? Something that cannot be easily replaced, at least not for many, many, many years. Another concern Mr. Ware has, and wanted me to express, is any potentials for conflict of interest that anyone on this board may have, his thought there is, I believe many of the council members and Mr. Ware are in an election currently, is there four seats on the council?
Three.
Three seats on the council, yeah.
Two council, one mayor.
One mayor, yep. And anyway, I know Mr. Ware's history, that he has ran for, I think, 22 years, if I'm right, but his view is, basically, we're, we're, we have several folks voting on something today in which he is running against, and he's concerned about any conflict of interest that that may create in, I guess, voting or making a decision today. One concern, or I guess, consideration, I may ask for, if, if there is going to be, or if the end result here is ordering abatement or removal, I would ask that Mr. Ware be given some period of time to abate that, or remove that on his own, following, if that's the decision of this council. The letter that I received basically told Mr. Ware that he, he could, I guess he could remove the trees. I think it was remove the trees by August 15th, or come to this hearing and at least be able to present some input or evidence, and maybe I'm wrong in that, but having the removal before the hearing to remove the trees and give input, I guess it seems the opposite way to list those. Yeah, it says, please remove these three trees no later than August 15th, and then you're notified that you can come to a public hearing, which is today, August 25th, to give your evidence input and such. So I would ask that if there is, if there isn't such an order, or ordering that these, these are a nuisance, that he be afforded some opportunity to handle that nuisance. And if the, if the council was willing to, I guess, delay this consideration and actually look at these trees on the ground, I think it would be helpful for an informed decision to at least see in person what we're making decisions.
What are you trying to allude to on that, as far as taking in the awe of how incredibly large they are? Cause I have been out there, not walking in his backyard, but standing in the front and walking back and forth through that area, and the two that are on the edge, I think, they lean, they're not even hard, they're in his property and they go, they don't go to the other yards. You know, to me, so I guess I don't, I'm missing something here, I mean, to me, I don't think that that would just strengthen my, strengthen my belief that it is a nuisance to neighbors, and reading the letters that they've sent, the pictures that they've taken, and concerns that they've had over the years, you know, it's not like Mr. Ware is suddenly enlightened to this tree problem, I do respect that, they could be expensive, and I get that, and I'm not a fan of that at all. But what, am I missing something, am I taking that different than what you did as far as those two?
To maybe a certain degree, I'll agree, there's leaning, right, that's probably what brought this out in the first place, leaning, some branches probably telling the neighbors and different things, and that's probably what seemed logical, right, created that concern. But to be a public nuisance, leaning, I don't think is really, I mean, that's perhaps a consideration, but really the likelihood of either those two trees falling down, I think is, that's really the crux of how do we determine what is a nuisance, is it gonna fall down, likelihood, and is it gonna cause property damage, right, that's really what the public nuisance.
Right, so I agree with that, and to me, the leaning would be my first shred of evidence that now I better get an expert, an arborist, to come in and tell me, is there a high likelihood that this tree could be damaged, or could be, could be damaging any neighbors in the future? Will there be a storm, it just falls over? My understanding is that the arborist looked at all of his trees, which he has several, and found that these three did seem to offer significant risk to the neighbors, maybe I'm missing that, somebody could fill me in.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, back when Mrs. Bickness came and first brought all of this to our attention, this is what started the ordinance, it kinda helped that ordinance along, we had arborists come out and look at those two trees that she complained about, the one that's directly on Fifth Avenue, that we've had lots of lovely comments on, and then two that Zach Breitenbach complained about, the two that Bickness complained about, those didn't fall under the hazardous, even though they leaned because they wouldn't hit the house.
So it's the two that are by.
The other two that are by SACs are the two that we marked as X, or X.
And what, did he elaborate as to what the, was, I mean, I'm sure he wrote a report or something.
He did, yep.
The theory behind some of it was, it's not a safety issue, property wasn't the issue so much as safety to person, and the ones that are over the Zach Breitenbach residence, there's a bedroom right there, and they hang over that property there, and they are infested with emerald ashbore. The other two would only land on fencing and stuff like that, and they didn't pose personal threat to anybody, so that's, that was his theory behind them.
Thank you.
And the one up front was on Fifth Avenue, isn't just cause it hit the neighbors, it is a crosswalk for a school that, right underneath that tree, so that is a big factor in, in that one on Fifth Avenue, the silver maple.
And then I just do wanna correct Mr. Novatny that Danny was made aware of this back in April, and he had plenty of time to make contact with us, and we have never heard anything from him, and then I think Melanie can.
I agree with that, yeah, that wasn't my intent, yeah, a letter came out in April, and then there was another letter that came out from Melanie, basically, yep, yep, and I was reading from the second letter. We cleared, but yeah.
And since it is a public hearing, we just wanted to make sure you had known more of the history of it, because when that letter came out, it was far ahead of anybody filing for any candidacy office.
Are you talking to Dan on the phone?
Right now, I'm trying to look, I'm not, I'm not familiar with the names you were giving for, you said trees next to certain houses?
No.
Immediate neighbors, yep.
Yep. What was the name?
Bickness.
Bickness and.
Zach Breitenbach.
And what's her name?
Monica McGuire, this house. So the two on the south side of his property.
Yep, that's McGuire.
McGuire, and then the one to the east of that is the Bickness.
And McGuire's have had, they've trimmed that tree, and a number of times, I think they spent anywhere from seven hundred to a thousand dollars, about their own money trimming the trees.
Cause the way we understand it from the city, they themselves had tried to visit with Mr. Ware and see if they could work out arrangements to trim things up so it wouldn't even have gotten to this point, but it sounds like from their feedback, he hasn't been very responsive to that, and that's what caused the neighbors to come to the council, so you're right, it was neighborhood concerns that came to the council to say, we're not getting anywhere on this. We've also received complaints from the neighbor on the north side backyard corner, Stoffron is their name, so not the ones immediate next door to his house, but in that backyard, they have complained over the past probably, I'm gonna say a year or two.
Of the six properties there, we've had four complaints, four of the neighbors of the six that bought his property, we've had complaints from.
And so when our initial letter went out, it was to see if he would work with us on some arrangements or some plans, cause the council's been very lenient on trying to help citizens get this all resolved in a good way, but we didn't get one response from Mr. Ware up here to City Hall that we're aware of.
And we have dealt with other property owners on that, and the tree removals, and they, they've complied, they've, so it's just not what we're intended for, Mr. Ware.
Yeah, I wasn't arguing that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. But so the, the trees that we are talking about, is there isn't one on the Bickness line that we're talking about tonight, right?
Correct.
Okay, not, it's McGuire, and then.
Fifth Avenue.
That front hall.
Okay, yeah, yeah, the front one, yep.
Well, I thank God the goodness of my heart, I'm gonna let the city attorney respond for me. Now, only if you'd like to respond to some of these allegations.
Uh, sure, I do, you indicated that you had some tree experts out at the property, do you know, the reports are any, and writing from the experts to back up what you're saying today?
Do not, that's why I didn't hear that.
He made a comment that the city, you know, that Mr. Ware believes that this is personal to him, that's why the city hires an arborist, and that the city doesn't go out there and the city staff do it themselves, is to prevent any appearance that it's personal in it, so, you, you, you asked a question about why the city hires an arborist, that's why. And last, I disagree that there are any conflict of interest with the council members who are in an election, you know, against Mr. Ware, that doesn't, there's no personal financial interests here, and nothing else, in my opinion, as the city attorney, that rises to the level of conflict of interest that require anyone to abstain from voting.
Do you have anything to add?
Go ahead.
Is anybody else got anything they wanna say? Any other, Harland, step up the podium, please.
Harland Thompson Stewartville, make this short and sweet, cut him down.
That was pretty quick, I didn't hardly hear that. No, he could be assessed, if we had to go in there and remove the trees, then he would be assessed that, so he would have.
Yeah, correct, it would go on, he would have his 30 days to pay for it, and then we'd have the assessment hearing, and after that, it would go on his taxes and yearly.
Plus, he has the opportunity to hire his own people, so we don't have to, correct?
No, he's already passed that.
He blew that, huh?
Yeah, yeah, he could have done that back, and April, we'll be getting those 45 days to respond to us, and then if he would have responded within the 45 days, we would have worked with him on extending it, because it's hard to, you guys are just busy, and we know they can't just get there right away.
All right. Anyone else wanna say anything during this public hearing? Otherwise, I'm gonna close the public hearing, open the regular meeting back up. I'm gonna note that if city orders the abatement, the city will hire the contractor to enter upon the property and remove the hazardous trees. Ware is the property owner, will be personally responsible for all costs of the removal, if unpaid, these special charges will be assessed to the property to be paid with property taxes. Council action requested tonight is determined that, to determine that the hazardous trees constitute a public nuisance and violation of the city code, and to order the abatement there pursuant to city ordinance section 610.07, order the removal of the two ash trees and silver maple as identified by the ISA basic risk assessment. Motion.
Well, due to the neighbors' persistence, and I know that I've been on the council awhile, and they've been trying to work with him for a very long time on this, it's not a secret to him, and he hasn't really taken a lot of action, I guess he might have trimmed one, but doesn't seem like he's really worked with the neighbors to try to eliminate this risk, I will make a motion to move forward with the removal of the trees.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Now, you're welcome to stay, Mr. Novatny, if you want, or if you have other things you need to get on to, you can do that. Next item tonight would be. I got it. West Development.
Need to bring your grandkid here so they can run your election.
I know. West Development Financing. At the August 12th meeting, council adopted the West Development feasibility study. Based on the council consensus, it was in the best interest of the city to encourage future growth development, with an additional incentive and per council request, staff met with city engineer Obernolte to discuss financing options. Based on the feasibility study, the recommendation from city engineer was to create a special sewer and water district for the West Development. The SAC increase would be $2,609 an acre, and the WAC increase would be $3,012 per acre. With rounding the figures, the increase of $5,650 would be in addition to the current fees of $4,000 per acre. At this time, it is the recommendation to create the special sewer water district and to participate in a 50% cost share of the city portion of sewer water mains to service the development. The city portion will be paid for out of sewer and water enterprise funds, as it is recognized that it is in the best interest to continue with growth for the city as increased serviceable area adds to our tax base. If approved, the developers are still responsible for their portion of the sewer and water main cost, and would be paying an additional SAC fee of $1,300 per acre, and an additional WAC fee of $1,500 per acre. It is important to remember that sewer water mains will only be added as development occurs. The attached map shows that the layout of these mains, on our maps, it's yellow is sewer, blue is water, with Chiocca and Gunderson participating. If Schuman decides to participate, the orange line will show the city participation line to serve his property. So the council action and discussion requested tonight would be to approve creating a special water sewer district to participate at 50% of the city portion of the sewer water mains based on the feasibility study figures. Questions, discussion?
I just have a clarification, so the orange part would be if Mark, if Schuman is one to work with the city, two, get the main to Gunderson.
Okay, that's not clear all the way over like we talked about one time.
Right.
Okay.
So it's not Schuman developing, that's Schuman participating to allow Gunderson.
Should be just Schuman participating.
Would be that orange.
All right. Otherwise, it was discussed, if he didn't wanna participate at all, can we run down the, right away?
Correct, we could cross the county road, and then Gunderson could take it from there and service his own area.
And this is all going to be based off a development agreement, correct?
A development agreement would be the first thing necessary to start the city into producing plans, and to accept bids, and to make any of the extensions, so a developer would have to have an agreement in place that they are going to move forward with the development before the city would spend any money to make an extension.
Was Wayne, or his guy coming down there?
No.
Any other questions or discussion, or anything you wanna ask Al or Jen or?
You got no kind of words? Yeah, I appreciate the fact that you're putting up some savings here for us, that doesn't mean I'm going to cloud mine. I guess, you know, if I keep looking at the numbers, and I was really here now, this material is going through the roof, but hopefully by next spring, it will level back up. We gotta wait, we're waiting for lumber anyway.
Okay, so even if we pass this tonight, it's my understanding, nothing happens until they sign development agreements.
Correct, basically passing this tonight would create a water and sewer specialty district that would have this additional WAC and SAC on it, stating that the city will participate in extending the sewer and water through the common areas.
For that, for whatever ends up being developed out in the northwest area there, up to I-90 eventually, maybe.
Yeah, for that entire area, that was included in the study.
All right. All right, any other discussion, you got a motion, one way or the other?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We got a motion in a second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. All right, now, now it's up to you. Next item under general business, automatic aid with Rochester Fire Department. The attached agreement will dispatch both Stirfield Fire and Rochester Fire resources automatically with 25 sections of Rochester, Marion, High Forest, Pleasant Grove Townships. These 25 sections straddle the border between the Stirfield Rochester Fire districts. If approved, all structure fire and motor vehicle accident calls for service within this geographic area will automatically dispatch both agents, agencies simultaneously. Automatic aid, similar to mutual aid, allows for multiple agencies to get alerted simultaneously, improve response times, negotiate a potential. improve response times, negotiate a potential for human error. Additionally, automatic aid will increase the frequency that neighboring agencies work together on the same incident, improving interoperability and building relationships and trust. As a point of comparison, similar agreements have been approved by both Byron and Elgin to create similar automatic aid with Rochester Fire along their jurisdictional boundaries. There will be no increase to our budget as a result of this agreement. Chief anticipates that the automatic aid would occur less than twelve times per year, requiring some of our existing resources to be out of jurisdiction for very short periods of time. But the gain to our interoperability outweighs the risk of some of our equipment being slightly out of jurisdiction. So, the council action requested is to authorize the fire chief to enter into this automatic aid agreement with Rochester Fire Department. If we have questions, we can get ahold of Chief Swisher or Assistant Wolf remotely. Okay, questions, discussion?
Make a motion to approve it.
We got a motion to approve, you got a second?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next item. Thermal imaging camera lease renewal. The Sturfield Fire Department is requesting that the city council authorize the department to enter, renew, into a five-year lease with three thermal image camera kits to be installed on Sturfield Engine number one, engine number two, and truck one. Total cost for leases is as follows, the total cost of the lease is twenty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. That's three QXT thermal image rooms, five-year warranty for each camera, mounting, charging hardware for each camera, annual cost of budget, four thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. This annual payment of four thousand six 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 is included in the twenty-twenty-one Sturfield Fire Department budget. So, council action requested is to authorize the fire chief to renew the lease agreement, Fire Safety USA, for five years for three thermal imaging cameras. Any discussion? If not, we'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do we have a second? We have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. Next item on our general business, library page Abby Teal. With the condition, conclusion, excuse me, of the interview process, I would like to offer the second of our two library page vacancies to Abby Teal. Council action is to approve, deny Abby Teal to be hired as a position of library page.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a motion and a second to approve, you want any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that will also carry. That's the end of motions and general business, that takes us to mayor's staff consult reports. Mayor's report tonight. We'd like to send our sympathies to the families of Frances Gantling and to the family of Karen Thompson. Congratulations to Bill and Carol Breezy on celebrating their sixtieth anniversary. Don't forget, the Sturfield Area Community Foundation will be holding their first annual golf tournament on September eleventh. Please support the foundation, all proceeds will go back to the area community through their grant program. Also, please be reminded that the deadline for the next round of grants is September thirtieth. Also be reminded to read the star this week and see the updated picture of Cheryl and Les Radcliffe gained their award. Very nice job, Cheryl, congratulations. Trash and treasure days will be held September nineteenth, sign up at the Sturfield Stadium. That's all I've got, city administrator Bill.
Reports in your pocket, a little shorter this time, and there's really nothing more to add to that, so I'll have some comments on some of the other committee things, but that should do it for this round.
Any questions for administrator? Alright, finance director Carl.
Um, we went through budget for twenty-twenty-one earlier tonight, and we were set ready to go, everything looks good for the report.
Any questions for Carl? Once again, thank you for the way you did that budget report, that was nice. Uh, public works, Sean.
Uh, report got in there late, but it did get in there, uh, business as usual.
You got the Sturfield sold, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Any questions for our public works director? Alright, thank you, city engineer report, Jenna?
Construction keeps moving on our project. So, we did get the first stage of the first years paid for last week, and, um, all of the sanitary and water on second and sixth should be completed by tomorrow. They didn't get the last man, hopefully tonight. So, um, moving on to storm, and then they'll be starting to build the road in that area, and moving to the last portion for this year.
Good. They haven't started any electrical underground, have they, are they doing that too?
They have not.
Okay. Just wondering if they're working alongside. Any questions for the city engineer? Alright, thank you Jenna. Library Nate.
Uh, above what's in my report, on Thursday, since the last day of employment for our, um, teenager. Um, she did a great job relabeling, a lot of the, relabeling or labeling a lot of the collection, and, um, yeah, we've kind of had a line change of our pages of the library with, um, three heading off to college, and two seniors coming in, so, um, I think I want to thank the council for approving both of them, not this month, and, um, I think they're really, they're really making you guys proud.
Alright, you're pretty comfortable with the ones you've hired?
Yeah, yeah.
Good. Any questions for the library director Nate? You're not going to do a crane this month, huh?
That's pretty popular, though, huh?
It was, yeah, it'd be cranes.
Wow.
This week, this week is pudding slime, which has not been as big a dip, but.
Let's do the parents. Alright, thank you Nate. You got the fire chief report in there, I see we're not going to have the pancake breakfast or the open house.
Right, yeah, just much as they wanted to, it just wasn't in the cards, as they say right now, so. And then at least for the youth, if you notice, they're going to try to do some video work, so we can still keep the prevention work going.
Library truck looks like it's working out for them. Great. Well, that'll take us to committee commission board reports, chamber of commerce, nothing tonight, EDA HRA.
Meeting last week, but the minutes are not in yet.
Working on some programs, finance.
Finance, we met tonight with, uh, with everybody on the, and, uh, good news is the city's portion of taxes are going to stay the same, so.
Great. Library.
Had meeting last week, uh, minutes are in the, uh, in your report, um, nothing really bad.
Park board.
Uh, there's sort of a bit of nothing.
Personnel. Haven't met for a while.
There's one question I need to just run by each of you, but nothing, nothing formal.
Plan zoning? Anything coming up?
Um, yeah, we have a meeting next Tuesday.
Meeting next Tuesday, public safety.
Report that we're notified of, so.
He's out keeping everything safe, hope he's keeping my neighborhood safe. Jesus, well, as long as I'm here, they'll be safe up there. Public works.
We actually just, last week, just took a field trip out and looked at the work that was going on, and tried to help the public here.
How'd you like it?
Nice, looks even better now.
One way or the other.
You going to brave that this year, Sean?
Uh, maybe, possibly.
Ready?
Uh, the only thing to report there is there was a meeting today, Zoom meeting, and, uh, the director, executive president, uh, Brian Nolander is resigning, and, uh, taking the job in the private sector with, uh, commercial real estate. And so, right now, they're going to regroup and see if there's ways to work with the chamber a little bit more, but, uh, continue the mission, so we'll just have to keep you posted with that.
Interesting. Roll cog.
Uh, main item, uh, minutes in your packet, main item is they're have out for public input, their next five-year and forty-five-year, twenty-five-year plan out to twenty forty-five. And so, if there is any of our public, uh, that wants to look at that, that can be reviewed on the Roll Cog website. And then you might hear news of the airport commission working on, um, the same type of long-range plans, which right now are very similar to what they've worked on over the past several years. And so, we do monitor both situations. That should do it.
Alright, thank you. Stu, one eighty?
No, thanks, we're doing it.
Alright, good. Transit advisory committee?
Uh, they'll have a Zoom meeting tomorrow.
Alright, communications, none in the packet tonight. Texas, the open mic, open mic policy. City council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be pertinent to city business and must adhere to the data privacy rules, so no employee's name may be used. Please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. We also request that comments be limited to four minutes, speakers be recognized only one time. At this time, we ask anyone that would like to address the city council, please step up to the podium, state your name and address. Nels, is that you?
I'd like to have an opening, Nels Wood also, but yes, thank you. Um, I'm Nels Pearson, I'm the state representative for House District Twenty-Six-B. Just, uh, making the rounds and saying hello to the jurisdictions that, um, happen to be in that legislative district, um, this year. Actually, I had Olmsted County's Board to my list of nineteen meetings, so now it's twenty meetings a year that I attend outside of the state legislature, um, which kind of works out, because my, you know, my wife and kids don't hate me anyway, so it's okay. Uh, but in all seriousness, it's, it's just always nice to, of course, put the faces to the names that I hear on, on a lot of the, uh, work, and obviously, the faces and names change from time to time, so it's just good to, to keep in touch, and of course, I always encourage and invite the invitation, come to meetings if there's specific state legislative issues that are before the city of Stewartville. I'd always love to be invited to meetings that pertain to that, um, and even though I've gone to one this year, I'll, I'll come back. I always like coming, coming down here, so, um, you know, we, we do have some unfinished business in the legislature. We're currently operating without having passed a bonding bill. Uh, in August, the Democrats did not put forward a bonding bill, because we were in a quiet time when bonds are being left, and it was, we could not actually have passed a bonding bill at that time, because our, the closing of how our bonds are sold hadn't been far enough away from the actual date of our special session. So, we'll move into September, we anticipate the governor will continue his emergency power executive orders, and based on the state statutes, our understanding of that means he has to call us back every thirty days at this point, as long as those powers are in place. And so, as long as he wants to extend those in September, we anticipate sometime in the middle of September that, uh, we'll be back up in, in the legislature. And again, um, the dynamics there are because the, uh, House is controlled by the Democrats, and that's the party of the, of the governor, of course. Um, at this point, they have not been, uh, putting forward the votes that would remove the governor's emergency powers and executive orders. So, we still kind of sit in this era of time where the governor is legislating, and I'm a supporter of bringing back us being a co-equal branch of our state government, because what our state constitution has, uh, has really demanded, and we are now a hundred and sixty-six days into what he told us was going to be a fifteen-day shutdown. So, um, I think we need to start moving forward and, uh, and having that, those legislative discussions again, allowing committees to operate and do their business. And, uh, again, I think we're certainly still in a, in a crisis, but we're not in an emergency where, you know, the cities and the counties are so overwhelmed by what's going on that they're stacking up bodies in the street, or, you know, people can't even get into an ICU because, because of the, uh, care that, that they need. And originally, when we started this process, that's what we were seeing in other parts of the world. So, that's why we did create this, we did, I think, flatten the curve. We've done a pretty good job of flattening the curve, and, uh, it, it's certainly time to, um, again, bring back that balance of power in my opinion. So, I don't know if you allow questions during this open.
I'm going to ask you one.
Go right ahead.
What do you see your fellow members across the aisle and the governor, how are they going to pay for Minneapolis and all the people out here? Going to have to pay for that disaster?
Because, of course, the federal government has not brought in that support. I think, I think those questions are still to be debated, um, I'm not a real big fan of that. You know, it's, uh, it isn't exactly like a tornado coming to your city.
No, it's not.
Um, and so, you know, that's something with natural disasters, we're certainly always been encouraging of. And again, just even dealing with the message and the tone of the mayor of the city of Minneapolis, um, I, I'm not a big fan of, of how some of this could have been calmed down with true leadership, and in many ways, um, that leadership was lacking. So, for, for my, from my perspective, I did tour that the week following the events at the invitation of the legislators that represent those district, districts, excuse me. And I, I do find it tragic that many of the people, I mean, you don't burn your own house down, right?
Well, they saved you up there.
Well, for the most part, again, if, if I'm living in the house, I can physically burn my own house down. I think, I think that's a pretty universal anticipation. And the riots that were happening, things that were happening, certainly, um, there, there were impacts. Uh, as far as, you know, whether or not that's the state's responsibility, I, I do find the, the governor's response to have been a little bit lacking. That last Friday night is when significant damage was done to people's properties, and it's primarily because they told the property owners, you cannot be on the streets after ten o'clock on that last Friday night. And they told, those people had been there three nights in a row defending their own properties. And as they defended the properties, um, on that, on that last day, they were told, we're going to enforce the curfew, you're going to be arrested just like everyone else if you're out after ten o'clock. So, they stood down, and that is basically when the most property damage occurred, was that last Friday night. And then on Saturdays, when the National Guard was activated and, and did its job very effectively.
I understand all that, Nels.
So, so in many ways.
I want you to fight for us all here.
Absolutely, and, and again, uh, those discussions are certainly being had, and, uh, it's not part of the bonding bills as, as we're moving forward, that's not really giving those discussions, so, um, it's a little bit outside, I think, of what we'll be dealing with here in September during this one, hopefully just a short, very short special session.
Because that money could, could affect our LGA, correct?
Well, that, it's, it's either going to increase taxes, we balance the state budget, so it's not like the federal budget where we just spend kind of arbitrarily. We have to balance the state budget, so the money comes through somewhere, right? And at the end of the day, whether that's bonding dollars, LGA funds, there's, there's all kinds of pools of money that, that they can determine. Um, but, uh, but yeah, I mean, that's certainly what, would, it will create cuts or increases in taxes, right?
At least, I've heard your bipartisan support for that LGA, we had a workshop tonight, and our city directly applies those dollars to keep our tax impacts lower here in Stewartville, so it's a huge help.
I don't want to open up a can of worms beyond my four minutes, which I know I've probably passed, um, but the COVID dollars that the city of Stewartville, if you're being counseled appropriately on that, I'm dealing with a lot of townships that are really feeling kind of lost on that topic and issue. Um, so I, I just want to make sure you don't need any additional resources. I'd encourage the, the townships to contact the county directly, of course, they don't have a lot of direct response. Um, but, you know, there's, there's just the indirect stuff of maybe making their bathrooms easier to clean, especially, you know, around, as, as we're surrounding an election day, and, and those, those facilities that they have. But as long as you guys are, are have that in hand, then I, I won't, I won't, uh, expound on that further, but we certainly want to encourage those townships to, because they, it's all, you know, population-based, it's how those funds were determined, and so it's, it's something for them, they have population, but they don't have a whole of immediate impact or, or reaction to it. So, those dollars will move up the food chain, probably back to the county first, then to the state. Of course, you know, the timelines and deadlines and all that, so as long as you got that, I'm happy. Always happy to be able to speak, so appreciate you open mic.
Thank you, Nels.
Thank you.
Last motion of the night to adjourn. Salute. Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, adjourned.